Good evening. I will call the evening.
Okay.
Evening, gentlemen. All members present? Uh, anybody recording? I don't see anyone, thank you. Uh, first item of business is the minutes of August 24th.
Right, Dr. George.
Got a green light. Uh, here in Mia. Is that better?
Motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of August 24th, 2020.
Second.
Motion made by Richard, seconded by Mike King. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds unanimous. Uh, next up is approval not required. Plan map 94 lot 6, 660 County Road and Fonseca Way. Pauline M. Searls care of GAF Engineering. Do we have plans for that, Ken?
You should have that on your t- on your...
Is it in this stack?
Yeah.
This was, um, Shell Lane, the one that was in the packet. Anybody have a copy of that in their packet? I just have Shell Lane in mine.
Bill, I'm trying to share up here. I'm trying to share with people in the room up there. And I just, the only thing I worry about if I might have a revision that's not the latest and greatest, so...
Yeah, the plan has not been revised, so it's the submitted plan.
That's the most current drawing.
Richard pulled it up there. Anybody need a paper copy?
Do you have, do you have a copy?
Yeah, we do. Okay.
Charlie.
Ken, hold on.
Ready?
All yours.
Um, Bill Madden from GAF Engineering. Here on behalf of the Searlses who seeking to create an additional lot off property they own, um, at 660 County Road. The plan before you indicates the divisional land that we're proposing to, uh, proposing to make here. The existing lot, lot 6 on map 94, was an L, basically an L-shaped lot, T-shaped, L-shaped lot, and a portion of it, a abutted Fonseca Way that was a subdivision that was approved by the planning board back in 2003. Um, so what we're seeking to do is dividing off, let's call it the front portion that's on County Road, the one with the existing house on it. There's a house, a garage, a small shed, a couple of small sheds and what have you. Uh, we're retaining the required frontage off of, uh, on County Road. You can see that we've shown the, the 180-foot zoning circle on lot 6A, the lot that contains the house. And then if we look over to the, to lot, lot 6B, we're now proposing to take our frontage off of Fonseca Way. That's a subdivision that was approved by, by the planning board in 2003. We have 300 feet on, on Fonseca Way. We're required to have 180 feet. We also show, in 60,000 square feet, the lot that we're creating, um, has no structures on it. It will be 62,286 square feet. Um, the zoning circle is shown on there. I show our building setback lines. All the buildings that are on the adjacent parcel meet the side yard setback, rear yard setback requirements. Um, and that's pretty much the, the situation. Our frontage will be coming off of Fonseca Way for the new lot, County Road for the old lot. Both lots have the, uh, the requisite area and frontage and contain the required zoning circle required by the bylaw.
What's, what's the frontage requirement?
180.
On County?
It's, it's in the zoning district, it's 180 feet. So we have two segments. One segment is 124.81, the other one is 55.19.
Oh, oh.
See that small piece down to the south?
Looking up here.
Yeah, right, right there, yeah.
Those are two...
Two segments.
Sorry, that's what, that's what threw me. Can you explain the, um, the right-of-way access to lot 109 comment down here at the bottom?
Yeah, there's a woods road, um, that goes through the properties, um, that provides access to a piece of property owned by Joe, Joe Barbosa. And, uh, those, those rights will continue to exist as, as they do today, um, through the cor- through the corner of the lot. So I don't know what the situation is with 660. You can see that existing driveway that comes up runs from the west to the east, and then it goes to the, uh, basically to the corner point of the lot, and then it says existing woods road, and existing woods road through the back portion of, of each, of each of the two lots, to, to Barbosa's land, uh, where that, that gate is shown.
On your locust, it looks like that road cuts through to Cranberry Boggs off of Cape Cod.
Does the sand pit back there, Josh?
Hmm?
Sand pit back there.
But there is other ways to get in there other than...
Found the wording disconcerting on your, on the note. Maybe an easement and but, words like may and but in there. Maybe subject, subject to right-of-way access? Not mentioned in the locust deed, but deed, uh, 109? Or is this pretty much a non-issue?
I don't think it's an issue as it relates to the planning board.
So all that right-of-way access is there today and will not change?
We have no proposal to change that access, no?
What's the status of Fonseca Way?
Whether it's private, public, it's a way shown on a plan endorsed by the planning board, and I don't think we, I don't recall, I did not check it out with the clerk's office to see it was an, if it was an accepted right-of-way or a private right-of-way at this point, I did not check.
It's a private way. And I have a question as to whether or not there is, uh, access to Fonseca Way to create frontage for that lot in the rear. Is it clear from the, from the, uh, the deed that the access is possible? Because that's owned by the developer of the subdivision. And although it is a subdivision that was approved as, uh, required by the subdivision rules and regulations and endorsed by the planning board, uh, there's such a thing as vital access? That is, whether or not it's real, that they can get access to the, to that, uh, that way? So the, the question becomes, is there actually access available on Fonseca Way for the rear lot?
Well, it wouldn't be considered a rear lot. And Fonseca Way is constructed, it's paved, it's 40 feet wide, I think it's 24 feet of pavement. I drove by, looked at it. Um, the subdivision plan that was approved by the planning board indicates that the, uh, the frontage of Fonseca Way abuts the property line of this lot, so the access to the lot would be from Fonseca Way. It's a simple case of somebody building, building the roadway and creating frontage for a, a party that was not, say, part of the subdivision proposal. Um, there's no reserved strip provisions in our, in the subdivision rules and regulations. Many times a town that might have a, a reserve strip provision, they would hold off a one foot wide or two foot wide reserve strip so that they blocked the frontage, um, from a landowner that wasn't participating in the subdivision, and that wasn't the case in the, in, in this, in this particular instance. So we do have frontage on Fonseca Way by the layout of Fonseca Way and by the approval of the, of the subdivision plan.
I, I don't know if the subdivision plan actually gives rights of access to the abutting properties, and I, that's the question, as to whether or not it's real.
It would, it's shown on a plan approved by the planning board, and if it's of suitable width grade construction, then I'd think that it, by virtue of that definition, it provides a vital access to the land. There's nothing that prohibits it. It's a, it's a form A land lot. It's no different than a form A lot that would be in Hathaway Street, on Great Neck Road. Um, somebody else built those roads, um, at some point in time, and they, they exist as, as vital access for anyone who is a, a owner of the su- of the land suitable enough to build a house on, on those roads. So we take it to, to be, um, identical in nature.
I think the original contractor is no longer exists.
Cornerstone.
Cornerstone. Yeah, I think they're gone.
And in fact, they approached the Searlses at one point in time, and they wanted to acquire this piece of property to include it in the subdivision, gave them a ridiculously low offer to purchase that property for that lot. They declined, uh, with full knowledge that they were creating the frontage for a potentially buildable lot, um, in the future.
I don't think that case holds water, though.
Pardon me?
Because, uh, Cornerstone did the same thing on the subdivision a little further up. They approached one of the owners with a backlot to buy the land this net, and he backed it at the last minute. The guy proposed to build a house on the lot for his daughter, and they says he did not have access to that road, even though it affronted his property. Uh, second case is on County Road, further up is across Murphy's Junkyard. The indiv- the person built a lot, had abutted the road, and they had no rights on that road. These are still private. Yes? I don't know, uh, in a previous case in the other subdivision, per, per the side of that, they were going to charge the, uh, abutting property to, for curb cut, basically, charge them to use their frontage, so. I don't want to create a title problem for you, but I don't know if that is still possible for them to pursue or not. Where, where the company's out of business, I don't know. Who owns the road? Is there a homeowners association yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
So who's, who's paying the tax bill on the road? Don't know?
No.
Is that one of the ones that has a sidewalk on that side? One of those subdivisions has a sidewalk?
I d- I don't know. If it has, so I think there was only a side. I, I drove by it Sunday, and I, I forget, I just don't recall.
Well, it is of sufficient width grade and construction, is that our...
You asking about a sidewalk?
Yeah.
It looks, if, if, it looks like there is a one...
It's on the other side.
On the north side.
Yep.
See it here, and it, but it terminates right there.
Yep.
Looks like it continues all the way down, down to the cul-de-sac, even goes around it.
Probably two-thirds of the way.
Next number of feet off the edge of the...
It's part, it's part of the layup. Right.
Yeah, it's on.
I'm sorry, what was your question, Michael?
Well, the subdivision, on, on the, most of the subdivisions that we're looking at, there's X number of feet off of the edge of the pavement. That's reserved for, uh, street trees, things of that nature. So wouldn't there be a strip of land that would be considered part of the subdivision that you would have to cross in order to get access to this lot from that road?
The road's in the middle of the layup.
Need 40 feet, I think, from the center line. I think.
Yeah, this is, Fonseca Way is laid out at 40 feet, and I, I don't have the, the width of the pavement in there, but I would, I would think it's 24, but, you know, that strip that would, seven-foot strip or whatever it is on each side of the, each side of the roadway, it's still contained within the layout, and that's what provides access to the traveled way within the layout.
But they, they don't have, they don't have any rights to pass across the other property to get to that road? Because like I said, we had three cases right in that area. Uh, two, two cases were the same builder, and the third one was another builder, but it was the same situation. The builders went, they squeezed them, when they didn't want to give, they says, well, it's going to cost you a lot of money to cross, to tap into my road, go the other way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know the details of the, of the other cases, I just believe it's no, no different than a public way, whether it's, whether it's Hathaway, whether it's Route 6, whether it's Great Neck Road, same...
Those are public roads.
Well, they're, they're town-accepted roads.
Right. These, these roads, far as I know, they're not accepted, they never have been accepted. They're still considered private.
Yeah, I, I didn't check. Did you check, Ken, this was not...
I did, it's a private road.
Okay.
It's owned by Cornerstone on the assessment records.
Is that, um, I don't know if that was a foreclosure or a lot.
Well, I think that might be beyond really planning board jurisdiction on this. I mean, it, it is, it is a way shown on a plan endorsed by the planning board, it does have sort of width grade construction. If there was an issue with access to that roadway, I think it's a civil matter that's beyond, um, the scope of planning board jurisdiction.
Yeah, but we're, we're making the problem even worse by demon, this is a buildable lot.
I want to point out that case law supports the idea of considering vital access, that is, if the access is real, regardless of whether or not it's a public way. Uh, and the one, um, indicating case was one where the, uh, it was a state, state highway and, uh, a, a barrier, a crash barrier was in between the property and the, and the highway, and they denied the access because it wasn't available through the, the barrier, and it was supported by the court.
Say, it makes perfect sense to use it, it's right there, but whether it's going to create a headache for you. I know we ran into another one where the, uh, the street ended at the property line, and the parcel beyond it had no rights to it, yeah.
So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the potential issue that, um, seems to be being discussed. Can someone simplify it for me?
This piece of property may or may not have proper access to Fonseca Way. They don't have rights on Fonseca Way. They don't have rights to it, yeah. The other subdivision corrected the problem when it became town-accepted. They could no longer deny it, but... It has sufficient area, and it does appear to have sufficient frontage where the, the question is whether it's frontage or not, whether it's frontage or whether there's a strip of land that precludes it being accessible to the road.
No, the layout dictates the frontage at the layout line, so it does have access to the layout. I think what you're questioning is whether or not the owner of the road would grant someone the right to pass across the, the strip that would normally contain a sidewalk to access the traveled way. And I would maintain that that's a civil matter, not to, not to, not to really be of a concern of the, of the planning board.
I don't agree with that.
I mean, it's going to be a concern, but it's not, I don't, I don't think...
We're here to, to discuss whether or not it's a gut access, and we, we were questioning that access.
But it's, but the, the rule is the layout, and the layout extends across the frontage of the property, and the frontage is determined at the layout line, not at the line of the pavement.
Charlie, can you help us in this one?
It's, it's my understanding that if a lot of land was not a part of the original subdivision, that the fact that the layout of the street abuts the boundary that separates the two, if it was never a part of that subdivision approval, that you don't necessarily have rights in that road to get access to that lot. Um, my recommendation would be, you've got 21 days in which to render a decision, whether it's in a subdivision or it's, or it's A and R approval, that maybe, uh, you allow time for Ken to look into that a little bit further with respect to that particular aspect of it, because I think it is important. Uh, if you simply sign it, there is a statement on the plan that says you're not doing anything with respect to, you're not making any kind of a statement with respect to zoning, but I think it would be prudent to at least have an understanding of what that vital access standard is that Ken has been speaking of, because again, if it wasn't a part of the original subdivision, they may not be able to claim the right of access in Fonseca Way.
Because I know three cases along County Road, all around the same time. I mean, these guys were like beavers in a pond, they were just cutting trees, and all of a sudden they were squeezing the neighbors to get more lots, and they says, hey, you don't sell it to us, it's going to cost you a lot of money to touch that road, that's private. And there's three strips right along there, two of them were Cornerstone properties.
And see, I worked on another subdivision many years ago in another town, and the abutting, the abutting landowner who didn't want to participate in the subdivision, we proposed a reserve strip to block him access from that road, um, which is, which is what we did do in that instance, um...
Well, Ken, you'll have enough time to get ahold of council or whatever, and figure it us out, right?
What would your, if you were tasked to get clarity on this, how would you go about that?
I would ask the engineer to do the title search to determine whether or not the access is real, it's available to the, to the property.
Through a title search?
Right.
Because, because if, if we said this was fine, the way building is going right now in this town bill, everybody and their brother is going to say, well, I, I can see that road is five feet away or whatever, I'm going to make a lot out of it. And, uh, I know we ran into this before, I think we should, uh, continue this hearing till we get enough time? I agree. I do too.
Yeah, I mean, I have no issue with continuing, continuing the hearing, we just filed this last week. I think there's plenty of time, um, to deal with it, and we can seek out a legal opinion as well. Um, our client could obtain a legal opinion on, on the access issue and, um, present it to the board for their consideration and go from there, and, you know, we'll just look at it, and in two weeks, we'll be more informed.
Entertainer motion, Josh, to continue? I know there is, there is a notation on the plan, but I think for everybody's sake, it's supposed to resolve it right up front.
Yeah.
Utilities are planned to come from Fonseca Way also, right? Correct?
Um, yeah, I would say the water would come from Fonseca Way and power, sure. So there's, those others, those are good points to address as well.
I don't think they ran water to that. Yeah, they did.
I'll look at...
Yeah, they did, no, they did that one first, because it was more than 1,500 feet away. And then they went, we made them hook it up when they put a second one in. Because Wendy Hill, Wendy Hill was supposed to have water. People were paying taxes for water bills, and they all got Artesian wells, because their subdivision's changed since, after seven, nine years. Well, since then, water has been brought up there. Since that approval. In fact, it might have been the first one's approval. The first one, right, it goes in, yeah. She's for that one.
Yeah, one of them was for the, it's on.
So when's the, uh, the next meeting?
There's something to be discussed by the board, as to whether or not they want to do the, um, 19th of October. Because our next meeting on the 12th is the Columbus, uh, holiday weekend.
I don't have one for that one.
12th is a holiday?
The 12th is a holiday, so you either do it the 5th, next week, or...
I'm open next week.
As I know, they're not accepted. They've never been accepted. They're still considered private.
Yeah, I didn't check. Did you check, Ken? This was not?
I did. It's a private road.
Okay.
It's owned by Cornerstone on the assessment records.
Is that, I don't know if that was a foreclosure or what. Well, I think that might be beyond really planning board jurisdiction on this. I mean, it is, it is a way shown on our plan endorsed by the planning board. It does have sort of width grade construction. If there was an issue with access to that roadway, I think it's a civil matter that's beyond the scope of planning board jurisdiction.
Yeah, but we're making the problem even worse by demonizing a buildable lot.
I want to point out that case law supports the idea of considering vital access. That is if the access is real regardless of whether or not it's a public way. And the one indicating case was one where the, it was a state highway and a barrier, a crash barrier was in between the property and the highway. And they denied the access because it wasn't available through the barrier. And it was supported by the court.
Say, it makes perfect sense to use it. It's right there. But whether it's going to create a headache for you. I know we ran into another one where the, the street ended at the property line and the parcel beyond it had no rights to it, yeah.
So, I'm sorry, I'm not understanding the potential issue that seems to be being discussed. Can someone simplify it for me?
This piece of property may or may not have proper access to Fonseca Way.
They don't have rights on Fonseca Way?
They don't have rights to it, yeah. The other subdivision corrected the problem when it became town-accepted. They could no longer deny it, but... It has sufficient area and it does appear to have sufficient frontage where the, the question is whether it's frontage or not. Whether it's frontage or whether there's a strip of land that precludes it being accessible to the road.
No, the layout dictates the frontage at the layout line. So, it does have access to the layout. I think what you're questioning is whether or not the owner of the road would grant someone the right to pass across the strip that would normally contain a sidewalk to access the traveled way. And I would maintain that that's a civil matter, not to, not to, not to really be of a concern of the, of the planning board.
I don't agree with that.
I mean, it's going to be a concern, but it's not, I don't, I don't think...
We're here to discuss whether or not it's a gut access, and we were questioning that access.
But it's, but the rule is the layout. And the layout extends across the frontage of the property, and the frontage is determined at the layout line, not at the line of the pavement.
Charlie, can you help us in this one?
It's, it's my understanding that if a lot of land was not a part of the original subdivision, that the fact that the layout of the street abuts the boundary that separates the two, if it was never a part of that subdivision approval, that you don't necessarily have rights in that road to get access to that lot. My recommendation would be, you've got 21 days in which to render a decision, whether it's in a subdivision or it's A and R approval, that maybe you allow time for Ken to look into that a little bit further with respect to that particular aspect of it, because I think it is important. If you simply sign it, there is a statement on the plan that says you're not doing anything with respect to, you're not making any kind of a statement with respect to zoning. But I think it would be prudent to at least have an understanding of what that vital access standard is that Ken has been speaking of. Because again, if it wasn't a part of the original subdivision, they may not be able to claim the right of access in Fonseca Way.
Because I know three cases along County Road all around the same time. I mean, these guys were like beavers in a pond. They were just cutting trees. And all of a sudden, they were squeezing the neighbors to get more lots. And they says, hey, you don't sell it to us. It's going to cost you a lot of money to touch that road. That's private. And there's three strips right along there. Two of them were cornerstone properties.
And see, I worked on another subdivision many years ago in another town, and the abutting, the abutting landowner who didn't want to participate in the subdivision, we proposed a reserve strip to block him access from that road, which is, which is what we did do in that instance.
Ken, you'll have enough time to get a hold of council or whatever and figure this out, right?
What would your, if you were tasked to get clarity on this, how would you go about that?
I would ask the engineer to do the title search to determine whether or not the access is real and it's available to the, to the property.
Through a title search?
Right.
Because, because if we said this was fine, the way building is going right now in this town bill, everybody and their brother is going to say, well, I can see that road is five feet away or whatever. I'm going to make a lot out of it. And I know we ran into this before. I think we should continue this hearing till we get enough time.
I agree. I do too.
Yeah, I mean, I have no issue with continuing, continuing the hearing. We just filed this last week. I think there's plenty of time to deal with it. And we can seek out a legal opinion as well. Our client could obtain a legal opinion on, on the access issue and present it to the board for their consideration and go from there. And, you know, we'll just look at it, and in two weeks, we'll be more informed.
Entertainer motion, Josh, to continue?
I know there is, there is a notation on the plan, but I think for everybody's sake, it's supposed to resolve it right up front.
Yeah.
Utilities are planned to come from Fonseca Way also, right? Correct?
I'll give you all of them.
Um, yeah, I would say the water would come from Fonseca Way and power, sure. So, those others, those are good points to address as well.
I don't think they ran water to that.
Yeah, they did.
I'll look at it.
Yeah, they did. No, they did that one first because it was more than 1,500 feet away.
And then they went and we made them hook it up when they put a second one in. Because Windy Hill, Windy Hill was supposed to have water. People were paying taxes for water bills, and they all got Artesian wells because their subdivisions changed.
Well, since then, water has been brought up there. Since that approval. In fact, it might have been the first one's approval.
The first one, right. It goes in, yeah.
She's for that one.
Yeah, one of them was for the, it's on.
So, when's the, the next meeting?
There's something to be discussed by the board. It's whether or not they want to do the 19th of October. Because our next meeting on the 12th is the Columbus Holiday Weekend.
I don't have one for that one.
12th is a holiday?
The 12th is a holiday. So, you either do it the 5th next week or...
I'm open next week.
Have you got time to get these answers in a week?
I, I kind of wouldn't think so, you know, with the way things are and people being busy. I would, I would think it might be difficult to get an answer in a week. I don't have an objection to the 19th.
Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yep. Does that put us past 21 days though?
Past 21 days, yeah.
I will ask for an extension of time from the, the year.
I can just get, can I give it to you tomorrow?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
As long as I have something to file with the town court.
Uh, motion to continue the A and R for Pauline Searls to October 19th?
Okay.
Discussion?
Hi.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
So, we have decided, we have pushed the meeting on the 12th to the 19th?
Yeah.
Item number three, request for approval of minor modification of special permit to Clearway Energy Group. Clearway Energy Group? For 77 Farm to Market Road? This is a request, a determination of whether it's minor. Is that it?
That's, that's correct.
Is this what you needed your Zoom for?
Yes. Thank you very much for accommodating.
Give me a second, okay?
Sure. They did say that they were successfully on the meeting.
Gee, and I just read all about the SMAT program. But it's gone. All right, if you, if you would, explain what you're doing for us.
Sure. So, Stacy Minahan with Beals and Thomas here with Zach Parkes of Borrego Solar Systems and Clearway Energy Group. And Clearway Energy Group representatives, Anna Chavis and Jen of First Sherwood are also on the Zoom call. So, thank you very much for accommodating the virtual hearing so that they can participate. So, we're here tonight, we actually have three minor modifications, which are all very similar in front of you. If it pleases the board, I can address them all in general, and then happy to take any questions that you might, might have about the specific ones. So, as I said, we've submitted three requests for minor modifications to three solar projects that were previously approved in January and March of 2019. Thanks to Ken and Sonya both for coordinating with us during the process of submitting them. And there's essentially two goals tonight. We're hopeful that the board agrees that these are minor modifications and approves these changes, which relate to the point of interconnection. And then we also wanted to discuss with the board the potential to have future similar minor changes approved through an administrative process with Ken, because succinctly, things with the utility company are a little bit in flux, and it can be very challenging surrounding the point of interconnection. So, I think in terms of the board's time and not needing to file again, we would appreciate that consideration. So, as I mentioned, the minor modifications are resulting at the point of interconnection for each of three projects. 77 Farm to Market, which is the one that you just noted, 299 Farm to Market, which is also known as 64 Farm to Market Road. It has two addresses. And then 160 Tahonet Road. And those interconnections are coming about because of the utility's requirements for interconnection in relation to the SMART program. Those requirements were published after the local permitting process with the town, and the approval plans actually indicated that as well, that the point of interconnection information was subject to coordination with the utility as well. So, the changes are not noticeable from public ways or neighbors. And I do have some exhibits as well that I can put up if that's easier. But succinctly, for 77 Farm to Market, we're slightly shifting the point of interconnection. Originally, there were five poles. Now, there are 12. We're still 120 feet from the road, and there's still the berm that was constructed for Phase One. And maybe what I'll do is run through each of these and then pull out the exhibit boards, if that's helpful. For 299 Farm to Market, the point of interconnection is extending slightly south of where it was. This interconnection is actually nearly 1,100 feet from the road, near the right-of-way, so it's well outside of anything that would be noticed. Originally, there were four poles, and now there are 10. And then for 160 Tahonet, again, we're extending the point of interconnection slightly south of the right-of-way, incorporating pad-mounted gear. Originally, there were three poles, so there was no pad-mounted gear. It was just three utility poles along the west side of Tahonet Pond. We're now proposing to move that east with poles and pad-mounted equipment off of the road, so further away from the pond. And for that, there are also plantings proposed along the road to screen it. That's actually a landowner requirement. They would like that pad-mounted gear and equipment screened from Tahonet Road itself. So, there won't be any visual impacts. So, with that, while you think of questions, I'll pull out the exhibits to review. I guess, does the board want me to pull out the exhibits, or are the plans that were submitted? Is that helpful if I point?
Sure. Might be easier if you had it, so you could point to things. So, they just moving the interconnection further onto the property away from the power lines, the high-tension lines, some process?
Yes. Yep, that's it in a nutshell. And I know that the mic doesn't pick me up when I talk over there, so I'm just going to sort of point to the changes for each one and then can answer questions. So, this is the 77 site. Here's a blow-up of the interconnection. The route used to go like this. Now, it goes like this, and there's some additional poles. It's a very minor, minor change. This is 64, which is the almost 1,100 feet from the roadway. So, here's the road. The interconnection used to come to about here, and now it's going down a little bit further on one of those bond roads. And then this is the 160 Tahonet site, where the route follows Tahonet Road south to the right-of-way here. Here's the blow-up. So, originally, poles were proposed along the west side of the road, and now they're being brought east into this portion of the site just south of the right-of-way with some screening proposed around the equipment area.
How much clearing is, is going to be required to accommodate that change?
That's about a tenth of an acre of new clearing.
You said you're going to screen it?
Yes. Yep. The landowner has requested that the, that the equipment be screened from Tahonet Road.
Questions? And the, the question in front of the board is, do you consider these modifications to be minor in nature and, and not require going back to a public hearing process to make these alterations?
I would have to say they're minor.
I'm sorry?
I would have to say they're minor. I don't consider these a, a major change.
I agree. Am I missing anything, Charlie?
No, just that, as Minahan talked about administratively approving the others, I'm not sure that I heard it all. But as a board, I believe you have to sign the modification. That modification goes to the registry just the same as the original special permit does. So, you need to sign that before it can get recorded. So, you either have to vote on the, on the language of the modification that will go into that before you can actually get it signed, I would think.
We've been doing minor modifications by letter that noted changes and...
Is there an additional MYLO needs to be created with the new plan, correct?
Yeah, and this would be where a MYLO would have to be, a plan would have to be filed on the land records.
So, I would look for a motion to approve the minor modifications to the three sites.
Yes.
I hear a voice.
How much taller are the poles going to be, is the question from Nancy McHale.
Poles are going to be the exact same height as the poles that were originally proposed. The quantity of poles is increasing for two of the three sites, with the exception of Tahonet Road, where we're moving from poles to pad-mounted equipment because of how space constrained we are. As Stacy said, we're only clearing one-tenth of an acre and probably offsetting that with new plantings. But the poles will be the exactly the same height.
Gee, get that?
Did you get that?
I really didn't.
It's the same height. The poles are the same height. They, they only, they only changes in the number of poles. But one, one thing I would recommend in the, these modifications, there's a change in ownership. I think there should be a review of the decommissioning bond again to ensure that it meets the criteria that we're applying to the, the decommissioning, eventual decommissioning of the site.
Yeah, who? Who is Clearway? Is that a division of Borrego or?
No, Clearway is actually going to be the financial owner, capital O, of the projects in operation. Borrego is a developer and a contractor, and Clearway is going to be the owner and the operator. So, I'm standing here, sitting here as representative of the contractor at this moment, not the developer as I was a couple of years ago.
So, you need pending clarification on the decommissioning?
What we need is the, the ownership to be clear, as to who owns the bond and who reaps the benefits of it should the project stall.
For clarity's sake, can the, the project owner, the project company, which is the bondholder that's been in place as per the special permit, is not changing at all. Simply the parent ownership of that project company has changed from Borrego to Clearway. So, through that change, all liabilities, responsibilities, and commitments stay with the project. And so, Clearway is well aware of those, those numbers and those responsibilities.
Do you need a document explaining that?
I think that would help.
I think, I think, yeah. Definitely have a paper trail.
Could you supply a...
Yeah, I think from a project schedule standpoint, it's important to continue with the approval of the minor modification because that's basically construction level. The, fundamentally, the reason we're here is because we're coming for the building permit shortly, and we wanted to make sure we had perfect transparency when you look at the current construction plans versus the originally permitted plans. And this is the only, only change that rises even close to, in my, in my opinion, minor. But yes, prior to the building permit, we're happy to provide or have Clearway provide a full statement of ownership and commitment and understanding of all the responsibilities of the project going forward. I'm sure the Clearway team would be happy to provide that.
And I, and I think, and Ken, I'm speaking a little bit out of turn here. I know Clearway's on the line as well. But I, there had been some correspondence, I think, regarding some of the requirements by email. Is that ringing a bell?
There's a lot of emails. Go out to the office.
Right. I think they had reached out regarding possibly some of the things we're talking about now. So, we can, I guess, just reiterating what Zach said, we can certainly close the loop with them, and I think they're, I know that they're on top of it.
So, do we have a motion to approve as a minor modification?
So moved. Duck it.
And this is for the 77 Farm to Market, 299 Farm to Market, and 160 Farm to Market?
Tahonet Pond?
Tahonet, yep.
Oh, last one's, I'm sorry. One of the, second one was, last one's Tahonet Road. Is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I think we have another one on Borrego here, though.
I think there's one in between us.
There's one in between. The next is an approval not required for map 20 lots, 1032, 1033, 1041, 1042, and 1035, 46911 Shell Lane and 5 over Jordan Road. TJP Realty, care of Cape and Islands Engineering. At our site visit, I got the impression they were going to withdraw and refile, so...
I did not receive any notice in the office about withdrawal. You may have come to Sonya, though.
Are you here to discuss that?
We're butters to that property.
Mm-hmm.
And ask a question, please?
Sure.
I think you just said something to the effect of after a site visit, you heard something to the effect of a...
Could you come up to the microphone, please, if you want to?
Sorry about that.
And you are?
Yes. My name's Bob Dermody. I live at 8 Shell Lane. It's my sister Mary.
Mary, and I live at 8 Shell Lane.
So, we're butters to this property. And we've met the new potential lot owner. And so, I guess I just wanted you to repeat what you said about after a site visit, there was a suggestion or talking of re-filing?
Yeah. Most of the board visited the site to see the condition of Shell Lane. And at that time, we found it not of sufficient width and grade for the additional construction. So, at that time, he was advised to withdraw the application and file it as a subdivision. But since, I've had second thoughts about that because I don't know that he actually controls Shell Lane and can, and can use it as a subdivision roadway.
And he being the owner of the land?
The proposed owner.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Which home do you live in, abutting?
Uh, we're at number eight.
It's shown on the plan, I think.
Yeah, that one right there.
The first one on the left as you go down Shell Lane?
Yes, correct. Yep.
I think I waved to you when I turned around in your driveway.
I'm a waiver. Well, being a private lane and all, right?
Do you have a copy of this?
You're the next, the first house on the left?
Correct, yes.
The first house currently on the left.
So, you mentioned the phrase sufficient width, and what was the second word?
Grade.
Grade.
The road, the road is degraded to a point where you must get a lot of puddling and...
We drive very slowly.
Yeah, keep speed down.
What we've suggested is, at that time, was that he bring it up to the standard that, that Lydia's Island Road might.
Oh, okay. And is there a minimum width you seek to do that?
Generally, for, for two lots like that, we would accept 16 feet wide, 12 inches of compacted gravel.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I heard after 16 feet wide and then?
With 12 inches deep of compacted gravel.
Hard to hear. Hard to hear.
Yeah, sound system doesn't seem to be working that well.
I know it's wrong.
Oh, is it your speaker out here again?
There are some places where he can't quite get 16.
Just two utility poles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think for the intent, for the, for the what, four lots that are down there, the two existing and the two proposed.
Right, and we're not opposed to improving the road, certainly, but we're concerned about how wide it might get. We're not looking for an extremely wide road because it's only our lot and the one beyond us that needs to traverse.
We just, basically, that's for the emergency services so they can get a vehicle down without it getting it beat up.
Understood.
But that's where we left it with him. I don't know if he could actually propose a subdivision where he doesn't control Shell Lane that I can see.
Our understanding, and I'm paraphrasing what we've obtained in terms of legal advice because we just want to understand what's what. But what we've been told is that it is indeed a private way and that as such, each lot that abuts the private way owns to the middle of the private way, and that's it. And so whoever owns the lot on the other side of the private way owns that house.
But ownership, they all have right, well, not all of them, but generally, they all have rights to the road, the full width.
Absolutely. I'm not saying that anyone shouldn't have right. I'm just saying in terms of...
I think the most difficult standard he'll probably have to meet is what conservation wants. Because he will have to take this to conservation. They may not like the 16-foot idea, especially where it's tight in some spots, but...
It looked like it might even be a coastal bank situation, almost based on what? Because I dealt with that situation earlier on a different project. He's getting, conservation's a huge issue there because the water, tidal water comes right up to that road, basically, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so you've had it in your yard before too, right?
Oh, yes.
The water on, yeah.
Not on numerous occasions, but certainly on occasions.
Yeah.
In the house?
But proposed properly and making the situation better, I would think conservation would work with him, but...
Well, and as my brother Bob indicated, we're definitely long interested in making things better. And so that's good. We're just trying to make sure that we understand what rights each of the lot owners have. And clearly, a lot right to pass and repass and use the road as a road, but in terms of making modifications to the road only on the part that a person owns.
The... Oh, I won't speculate, no. But yeah, I would assume you all have the rights to pass and repass.
Yeah.
But we're curious to know if the right to repass and pass is different than the right to improve.
That would be the, you'd have to have the cooperation of everybody to improve. That's my, that's my take on it. You'd have to...
And we've already discussed preliminary ideas with the potential new homeowner or lot owner.
He did seem agreeable to anything that needed to be done.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, he wants to build a house there. I get it. And we're not trying to stop it in any way, but we're just trying to understand what everybody's rights are. You mentioned the word subdivision, so theoretically, though, Mr. Parento, I believe, is the owner of the land, owns the large parcel behind it as well, all the way over to over Jordan Road. So theoretically, it could be a potential subdivision coming not off of Shell Lane but off of Great Neck Road or over Jordan Road.
Yeah, I certainly think he has enough land there.
Yeah.
I don't know what his plans are, but...
Right. But then it gets to this question, and I think maybe similar to the issue you were discussing on Fonseca a few minutes ago, of access to Shell Lane from the lots that abut Shell Lane, if the subdivision comes from another road.
Yeah, he, there's nothing on this plan that would demonstrate the access would be from there, but...
Right. No. And right, that's, from what we understand, the access is intended to be off Shell Lane because there's two additional parcels beyond us that are on the waterfront access. And I think that's the attraction to the new homeowner, is that they're getting a little lot on the water as well.
Yeah, they're...
Right, the non-building lots.
Yeah, they're just points of access for these lots.
Exactly. Who defines points of access in the town? Is that a planning board or conservation or zoning? Like, could they drive a car onto that small lot?
All he's doing with us is creating that parcel.
Just creating it.
So it's not, it's labeled not to be, not a buildable lot.
Right.
How he achieves access, again, would have to go to conservation more than likely.
Right, that's in a buffer zone, I think, or if not, an actual wetland.
If it was just foot traffic, I don't think anybody would bother them.
That's what we're looking for.
If you get the vehicles, storage, and packing, it'd be a different story.
Right, okay.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
So in terms of improvements to the road, the future of a lot and home builder-owner may be required to improve the road, but only to the point where his lot ends? Is that correct?
I think that was his intent to the lot line between you and...
And actually, I guess I could rephrase.
He seems, he seems quite agreeable to do anything, so...
I should rephrase that. It's not he, but would someone be requiring us to do the same to the road as it exists currently in front of us?
No, it wouldn't. No, you're not required to do that.
I think he'll probably try to make it better, but just want to know.
Well, we'll have a new road as far as our property line, and then we're good.
Yeah, because the driveway's right on the corner.
Yeah.
I don't know if he intends to go further. I would think that would be with your permission.
Right.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
And then also, the road now is down there on the, on that plan as well. I think it goes from 30 to 15, if I'm not mistaken.
But you on both sides, right?
In that stretch, yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, and actually, that wasn't shown on his piece of paper that he has submitted presumably for tonight. It shows one lot that we own across from his, but we also own the next lot down across from his new property. We own all the way down on the other side of the road, across from him. It's not marked at all on this.
In the wetland area?
We own, yeah, we own the entire marsh down to just about, I believe, where's my marking? I tried to do an estimate. Bob's the engineer. I wish I were one. It's just about, we own just about opposite, see the dashed line that says former lot line?
Yes.
We own just a little bit past that, and then a point that goes almost parallel, but not quite, to our other lot line way on the other side. So we own, we own about two-thirds across from him. And then the next piece is owned by the Burgess Family Trust, Henry Burgess, Joseph Burgess, Ethel Burgess Trust, which is, was created as a right-of-way for people to be able to pass and repass for recreational purposes, swimming and perhaps boating. What's that, about 12, 50 feet wide?
Yeah, that's, let's not get too far astray.
Yeah, you're right.
One last question for me, please. Is there a new date, or do you just wait to hear from the applicant?
There must have been a miscommunication somewhere along the line that I'd...
Fair enough.
But yeah, I would say that he's got to work out which way he's going to go and then come back to us.
Okay. We'll keep an eye on the agenda.
He keeps us, he keeps us informed, which is really helpful. So we're all talking, and that's great.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much for answering your questions.
Charlie?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think you have any choice on this application. The 21 days has run or is running, and it will be out by the time you reach your next meeting. If he is not here to answer what he wants to do, I think your only choice is deny the plan under an A and R. Because if you determine that that road is insufficient, the only way you can improve it is to bring it back as a subdivision, which you could inform him of. But I believe you need to take action tonight and to deny the plan on the basis that road is not adequate.
And if we didn't, Charlie, then it's approval by default?
It might be considered a constructive grant. That's correct.
I would recommend a little bit different. I don't know if you want to do this, but recommend that you deny it on the basis of a lack of information that's necessary to make a determination of an approval not required to have a subdivision.
With all due respect, Ken, I think the board did that when they were out there. They made the determination it wasn't adequate, and that's one of the stipulations that you have to show, isn't it?
It is, and you can go on that basis as well.
Do you want to do it your way, Ken?
Just to allow that there's nothing fundamentally wrong with the application at this point. You have a review that's necessary, and you don't have an engineer to answer questions regarding the project.
So if we miraculously went back there for another site visit and found it to be of sufficient width and grade... Tell me if you've heard this before.
That's very good.
Entertaining the motion to deny the application, George? Yeah, I like...
Find it as a subdivision.
I think at this particular juncture, we're just denying the A and R.
Correct?
For lack of information?
You're finding it as a subdivision, if you want to do it that way. That you found that the road was not of proper width grade and construction, and it is a subdivision, therefore, and you reject the A and R.
He has to reapply for a subdivision.
I think that's correct.
But can he, he can't approve it as a subdivision because he doesn't control it.
You're not doing that. All you're saying is that because it doesn't have adequate access, that it is a subdivision and requires further action on the board and further information, but you're denying it as an A and R. If you don't do that, he'll get a constructive grant.
Motion was made. Was it seconded?
Seconded.
Discussion?
Can I ask another question now?
Sure.
There was one phrase there that the gentleman used that I just couldn't hear or understand. If he doesn't do that, it'll be a constructive grant or something?
Yeah, we have 21 days to act on this after it's been submitted to us. And if we don't act on it at that time, it becomes an approval.
Oh, okay.
So...
Okay, thank you.
May I ask one more question? It's more of a question of where I should go to get my question answered. If you look at this document which was submitted to you for tonight, there's an inset, an inset which shows what's happening to the lots around what is shown in here, specifically referring to Lot 1035D, which is indeed the large property that was, is owned by Mr. Parento. I took the liberty of blowing it up because I was having trouble looking at it, so I made it really big. And one of the things I'm having trouble looking at this and looking at the town assessor's maps and so forth is I can find Lot 1035A because we actually own that. We have a little piece that came off of that big lot. It's ours, 1035A. And I can find 1035C. That's the lot that you recently reviewed where there's going to be a barn and a new family dwelling. And this is Lot 1035D, which is what's left over of the really big, big parcel of this area. And my question is, where is Lot 1035B as an boy?
I would suggest you come into Town Hall tomorrow, and I'll take you down to the assessor's office, and we can review the plans and make the determination about what property is which.
That would be great. I would love that. Thank you. I'll give you a call.
Fine.
And by the way, your administrative person, Sonia, is incredibly helpful. She's wonderful.
Isn't she? I agree.
She should get a raise.
Not just because she's listening.
Can you make that motion?
She should get a raise, Ken.
Did we vote on the denial?
Yep. Thank you again, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
And we had more questions come up, but, no, I did. I did ask for a vote on the denial. You guys nodded.
Okay.
Approval not required plan for lots 111-1000H and 112-1000 with lots 111-1000F, 140 Tiahonet Road. You guys need to simplify these lot numbers.
We're trying. Trying to.
Which one is this? Searls. I'm just trying to...
I'll take the old plans.
That's Searls. This is... This is this one. This two there. And this is...
This is different than the one, other one they passed out earlier?
Yeah, this is a new approval not required, so 140 Tiahonet Road.
Which one is this, the old one, Ken?
You gave me two of the same one.
That's what I just asked, George. Do we need to zoom for this? I think it got shut down, didn't it?
No, we don't.
No?
I thought there was two there, but there was actually three.
Probably sent you an extra one. They just passed out the request for minor modifications, right?
We passed the minor modification, yeah. We passed the minor modification located.
Yeah, that's what you just handed me.
That was in the A and R file.
Yeah, that's the A and R. That's the wrong, yeah. That's what we discussed previously.
Are you able to put that one up, Richard, or are you totally confused now? I don't know that it's, I mean, look. 1620?
Those aren't the A and Rs.
Yes, 1620.
I got it up on the screen.
All right.
I have the other document too as well.
That's great. Good evening, Zach Farkas, Borrego Solar. In November or December, GAF Engineering was in front of this board with an A and R plan for this area. We are making a modification to that A and R plan with this new A and R plan. Essentially, what we're doing is we're adjusting some of the lot lines such that when we provide our updated plan for the 140 Tiahonet Solar Project, there'll be no issues with the 50-foot setback that we've kind of struggled with in the past with this board. For past projects, we've kind of made an A and R, a future A and R, a condition of the approval. We just thought it would be a little bit cleaner if we come here now, get the A and R plan approved prior to submitting the updated plans for 140 Tiahonet Road. What we're doing here is there's a right triangle sliced parcel. I believe it is referred to as parcel, parcel C at the middle, upper middle of the screen. That parcel, that piece of land is simply merging into the 140 Tiahonet Road parcel. And then if you scroll down a little bit, Richard, you'll see the southern lot line is dropping from a bog road to another bog road to incorporate what will be the southern bound of the one.
That's a pointer.
Very good. So the first lot I was talking about is right here. This right triangle was originally part of this lot here. It's merging into this lot here, and kind of logically, it makes sense. This is wasted area. We couldn't use for the solar project. It's buried way back behind the trees. We thought that'd be a valuable use of space. And then this bog road here was the original southern bound of the lot that we're using for the 140 Tiahonet Road Solar Project. We're adding this area here from the great lot to the south so that the solar project can dip in here, and we can provide adequate 50-foot vegetated setback along that property line, so there's no issues when we bring that plan forward.
A question came up about that little stub of roadway that's depicted there, about...
Here?
No.
Here.
Right there.
Yep.
Is that on a, we couldn't recall that being shown on a plan.
That was on the previous A and R plan that was approved in November, December of 2019. And you'll see with, when we update the Tiahonet Road Solar Project, this stub of road will come down and around and connect with what is referred to as Jordan Road.
Another people plan, Ken?
I can't find one in the file.
Oh. Let's move to Great Neck. Scroll northeast.
George, I didn't understand what the concern was about the quote stub, if you will.
Well, when we... The question came up whether that was a new addition or whether they were creating a subdivision roadway in effect, so...
That bog road exists today. That bog road exists today.
The question is whether or not the right of way exists.
Yeah, you've created a road layout parcel.
I see. I see what you're saying. We definitely didn't create it with this A and R plan. I would refer you back to the A and R plan by GAF Engineering that originally set that stub.
That's the intent of that is to provide service access for the solar field?
I can't say what the intent of that stub is.
The future intent.
The future intent is to satisfy the town's requirement of a ring road around the solar facility for emergency access, and it's also to continue allowing use of the agricultural vehicles with Makepeace to continue to traverse their property.
And this parcel C was part of the other solar field, and you're taking it off and making it part of this one, is that...
Actually, no, it was neither. It was a third parcel that had nothing to do with either solar project, and the land was simply trapped south of the utility corridor. So it was never accessible for Makepeace with that existing parcel, and so a little bit of, call it OCD cleanup, to make the lines a lot truer. And then also, there's a, that's some acreage that we could use for the project. If you recall, we've set that setback from Tyhonet Road to be somewhere in the 175-foot range. And so just, we've lost about 10 or 12 development acres. So we're able to take some acres that are, call it of lower value from a screening standpoint.
Questions?
I'm not quite following you. The triangle shape that you're depicting, that's being added to or taken from the existing? It's being added to. It's part of this lot up here. Yep. This lot is a third lot. 140 Tyhonet Solar is focused here. 150 Tyhonet Solar is focused here. This is a third lot over here. Here's the utility corridor running through it. This is the kind of long-lost right triangle of land that we're merging into this parcel here.
Basically making the utility access the northern border?
The midway point of the utility corridor, but yes. It'll be a common boundary between all three parcels now. So is there going to be a net gain or loss of panels as a result of this? This will contribute to us gaining back some of the modules that we've lost or some of the development acres that we've lost. Maybe the wrong be the right word, but there'll be, in total, it'll be a net reduction of developed acres for that project. A reduction? Reduction. From the original plan submit. I know this isn't the hearing for that, so I want to be careful, but the total, when you see our revision, will be a net reduction. So does this impact the layout of the array that was approved at all? It hasn't been approved yet.
That'll be taken up after, when we get into the continued public hearings, we'll be addressing that.
I have no questions, George.
Motion?
George?
Yep.
May I just make a comment on this?
Certainly.
I don't think this plan does what the applicant is asking to be done. Because if you maintain those internal lot lines by signing this plan as approval not required, they're still going to exist. It's my view that the plan should show those inner lines as dash lines so that you combine it all into one acreage.
The call out right here says lot lines...
That's correct. Both those lines. Those right angle lines should be shown as a dash line, and that bottom line, which is the center line of a road, that should also be shown as a dash line too, and then show the area as one area. If you don't do that, you haven't accomplished anything. You're still going to have a plan on record that shows those lots, and the assessors are going to assign those as lot numbers. So the best thing to do is to incorporate it all into one with one lot number, one lot letter or designation. Then when the assessors see it, they will assign it that way, and you won't have the issue about running over boundary lines with your solar array. If Makepeace still owns all of that land, north and south and a part of it, and they're going to lease you that property, they would have to, as this plan shows, lease you three different pieces. Whereas I'm sure your intent is to simply show one big piece with the solar array on the interior. So I would think the appropriate way to do it would be to show those as dash lines so that they're incorporated into one parcel of land.
Charlie, you don't think that the note on there that says the tax parcel lines are to be removed is sufficient?
No, because just stating it on the plan doesn't make it so. You could endorse it, but then they'd have to get a deed from Makepeace that allows that parcel to be cut out from the abutting land. This way, you will have incorporated everything into the one piece, and then Makepeace can write their easement or whatever they're doing with the owner-operator for that entire piece. But simply making a statement on the plan does nothing.
It showed dash on there. It didn't get put on paper.
So Mr. Rowley, you're just saying the issue is, call it semantic, that we haven't dashed the lines as opposed to drawing them as hard lines?
Right. This line, this line, and this line, shown as a dash line and saying you can call them former lot lines, but then you will show parcel A, parcel B, and parcel C, all as one parcel with one area.
And so you don't believe the note right here that says Lot 1, a combination of parcels A, B, and C, 81, 83.84 acres is sufficient?
No. No, that does not accomplish what you're asking to do.
I don't know what the right answer is, but if it's the will of the board, I'm happy to have the surveyor modify the plans to show dash lines just so everyone's comfortable. There's no time constraint on this, so...
Do you have any other issues with it, Charlie?
No, that's the only thing. I just, I feel it's not accomplishing what they want to accomplish, and I'm trying to suggest the best way out of it. So if they were to redraw this one and come back with a Form A that showed that as one piece, I wouldn't have any objection to that. I think it would go a long ways to accomplishing what they want.
Could we approve it with stipulation that the draw...
No, you can't. No, you don't stipulate anything on a Form A. It's either an up or down vote, Richard. It's either an up or a down vote on a Form A. There's no conditions you can attach to a Form A.
But you get...
I would have to agree with Charlie. I think the plan should be drawn correctly.
Because it's going to come down to haunt somebody later on in life, you know, who's they're going to say what the heck happened?
Yep, I respect that. I don't...
Based on what we've been seeing, Zach, I think Charlie's right on.
For sure. I'm certainly not a surveyor, and if that mistake was missed on our side, I'm happy to correct it. Should we confirm we have that we're outside the 21-day window if we go to the 12th or the 19th? Because we're happy to grant an extension.
Do you have the date?
Just for Borrego's references, are there any other issues with this? Is this the only one getting the maps updated to keep us from approving this?
I don't have any issues.
That's about it.
Should be withdrawn. To be in compliance with the statute, it should be withdrawn, and you file it again with the modification on it, and then there's no question about 21 days or anything.
So we don't have to make a motion. He's going to withdraw it without prejudice, right?
He could if he wishes, or if he doesn't want to withdraw, you'd have to deny it.
You'll have to deny it, right, yeah, because October 11th is the deadline. Ken, is the Mylar you have not have a dash line? Because that does look like a dash line to me, and that might just be the pixelation. A little Hail Mary, a fourth and long, might as well ask.
Yeah, somewhere between there and there.
I think it might be the pixelation of the board, but...
It was printed correctly.
Incorrectly. I will request to withdraw without prejudice, and I will resubmit later in the week.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we have the continued public hearing for, and I will list them.
I'm worried, George, I'm worried. We published on the agenda the Zoom meeting, and I know there were folks from Land Trust on for the first part of it. We've discontinued the Zoom right now, right?
Right.
We may have...
I only had one person that was left on the Zoom meeting after the discussion.
Oh, everyone left?
Yeah, except for Nancy Papalardo. And she probably wants to know what's going on.
And that's what I'm worried about.
Why don't I email her?
Can we...
See what the option is available.
Can you rejoin that, or...
Yeah. Should be able to. Let me just, I just don't want to have to do it over again.
Well, this is a public hearing, and it was posted as Zoom, so if we can get back into it, that would be... So this is the continued public hearing for 27 Charge Pond Road, 140 Tyhonet Road, and 150 Tyhonet Road.
One more on the next page.
That's 150, right? Is there another one?
Got me flustered. Dash lines.
27, 140, and 150, right?
Correct.
Are we doing all these as...
We conducted, we were doing them jointly previously, so...
I suggest we continue that.
Okay.
Can someone remind me, I don't know what the open issues or open information requests we had were to continue the hearing. Last time we met, we did the sightline information, correct?
Correct.
Be happy to.
Did we go over that, or you weren't here that meeting?
I updated him. Do we want to wait for the Zoom to...
It may take me a while to do that. Make me log in again.
We would like to request a continuance for the 140 and 150 Tyhonet projects and can provide an update on 27 Charge, which we submitted plans for.
Say that again.
So we're requesting a continuance for 140 and 150 Tyhonet.
Okay.
Since the last hearing, we have not submitted new materials to you. We focused on 27 Charge Pond Road to try and satisfy peer review comments, and then we'll be taking those and applying them to 140 and 150, but we have not yet submitted revised materials to you. So we're requesting a continuance for those two. And then 27 Charge Pond Road, we can review where we're at and what we've submitted.
These are the documents that we have. Is there one in particular that we should be looking at as a team?
7-20?
So that's...
Is that, what's that date on that one? So we've submitted two letters in response to Mr. Rowley's comments. One is, was today, and I have hard, we submitted it electronically. I have hard copies for the board and Mr. Rowley as well. And then there was also an earlier letter. That probably is less helpful at this point.
That's the original.
Right. And actually, that looks like, so the one you were at, the response to peer review comments, the last two PDFs? I can't read that date, but I think it says sometime in August, right? Okay, no, mid-September. So this was our response to Mr. Rowley's initial comments, and then he, we submitted revised materials. He provided a supplemental letter, and today we submitted responses to that that we can...
This is today's letter.
Go through as well. That's today's letter, yep. So this is probably the most helpful. So while we're waiting, I can pass out copies if it's helpful.
Did you get hold of her?
Not yet.
There should be enough ready for everyone in the room.
Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie, should we get one, Charlie?
All right, I got a PDF today. I'm all set.
I don't have an answer yet. I don't know if we should, how long we should wait for them to respond.
Best you can do is open the Zoom up.
I did already, yeah. I noticed her, emailed her that it was available, so we'll see if she attaches, joins in later. She said thanks, so I'm assuming she'll get on pretty soon.
Pardon me?
She said thanks, so I'm assuming she'll get on pretty soon.
Same one?
Same one. All right, she's on. Hi, Kathy. Great, we're here too.
Appreciate you sending.
We can go.
We're good, George. We're good, we can go.
I'm not done with you.
This isn't Mike's fault. So people on Zoom can hear you speaking, okay?
Thank you.
All yours.
Stacy Minahan with Beals &amp; Thomas, Zach Farkas with Borrego. So for the 27 Charge Pond Road project, since we last met, we received peer review comments from Mr. Rowley, addressed them, and issued responses to those comments, and revised plans, which I've brought with me tonight. Subsequently, Mr. Rowley reviewed those materials, issued an additional comment letter last week. Thank you for turning the review around quickly. And we've issued a letter today with responses to those comments that did not entail a full set of plan revisions. So I think, and please correct me if I'm mischaracterizing, but there are essentially three sort of outlying issues, and I guess let me back up for a second as well and say, we've also completed the wetlands delineation review with the Conservation Commission, which is one of the things that we were waiting on before updating our, the layout. And so the plans before you reflect any revisions to the wetland delineation as well as considerations to try and reduce the solar panels in certain areas in accordance with Mr. Rowley's original comments. So I think the three items in the latest letter relate, that warrant discussion relate to a stormwater basin within the 50-foot zoning setback, some discussion of visual views from Charge Pond Road, and then there were a few other more detailed technical-related comments that in our response letter, we've indicated we agree, and they'll be reflected on the construction drawings, they're sort of construction-level information. So the basin that's being discussed is located here at the site entrance. I think what it comes down to is a difference in engineering opinion. Our modeling indicates that we do need to have a basin here in order to address the runoff from the site, particularly because of this wetland here. It's an isolated vegetated wetland, and we're trying to maintain the drainage patterns to all of the wetlands. So this basin is within the 50-foot zoning setback. It will be fully vegetated upon completion of construction, and it is in association with the site entrance, which is allowed to pass through the 50-foot zoning setback. So our understanding was that that stormwater basin could be located there, and I don't want to speak for him, but I believe Mr. Rowley has indicated, questioned whether that basin is necessary and whether it can be relocated from there. And then in terms of the views from Charge Pond Road, Mr. Rowley had commented in his latest comments to vegetate this, I'll call it the Y, area of the site entrance to block some of the views, which Borrego in today's letter has committed to landscaping that area as well. I believe that the remaining comments are things like enough cover over pipes and things like that that can be readily addressed during the construction drawings.
Polls versus pads.
What's that? Oh, yes, and there was discussion of regarding the visual impacts. We're proposing poles, utility poles, along the site entrance. We think that that will have less of a visual impact because they're spread out for the 300-foot, you know, distance entry into the site. Pad-mounted gear could be done instead. There is somewhat of a qualitative aesthetics discussion. Different people think different things have a greater visual impact. I think Borrego is of the opinion that the pads may have a greater visual impact than the poles leading down the site, but we would defer to the board if there is a strong preference for pad-mounted equipment at the entry.
Does that mean all your normally ground-based equipment is going to be up on poles? Am I missing something there?
Just the interconnection equipment alone. Mr. Rowley provided some pictures of existing projects that are currently in operation that have utilized pad-mounted equipment. Just earlier today, we recommended pad-mounted equipment at the minor modification of 160 Tyhonet. The only difference is that this, instead of having 60 to 100 feet to cram 12 poles or 12 pieces of equipment, whether on a pole or on the ground, in this case, we have 300 feet. It was frankly my personal opinion that spacing 12 poles out over 300 feet would be less of a visual impact than clustering a bunch of gear on the ground, but as I said in the letter, I'm happy to go along with the direction that the board gives us, be it pole mount or be it ground mount.
Is that where you're, are you proposing battery storage here also?
There's energy storage on all the sites that we've brought before this board in the last three years.
Would be up on a pole also?
Everything will be exactly like it normally is on the ground, except the meters, the transformers, the reclosers, and the redundant gear that requires us to put up all those poles and/or all that equipment. We're designing this project as the previous projects would have been designed had we known what the requirements are. So the earlier meeting was bringing those older approved projects up to the kind of the level of metering required in today's program. But yeah, the only, the question really is, does the board or does anyone have any strong opinions on whether 12 poles spread out over 300 feet is less visually impactful of 12, or I should say 11, equipment boxes on the ground with one pole to get it to the existing distribution on Charge Pond Road? And as Stacy said, it's pretty subjective, right? It's aesthetics. I propose poles in frankly in good faith, thinking that you could push the equipment way back, but as I said, totally up to the board.
Why can't the ground-mounted stuff be pushed way back?
There's different requirements for how their access and how they connect with all the different equipment pads. It would, it'd be really challenging to push it all the way back, but we can, we can do whatever you guys want to do.
What do they look like, the ground-mounted?
It looks just like, you think about like a Walmart parking lot, the big green transformer? Basically, these big green boxes on top of concrete pads with some of them have kind of chases or vaults underneath them. There's a couple of pictures Mr. Rowley provided in his comments that were fairly accurate.
On page three of Mr. Rowley's, there's, I don't know if you want to pass this over, it just has my notes on it after, so.
On Charlie's letter?
Yeah.
Yes, page three. Both of those photos show ground-mounted gear.
Do we have a representation of the pole-mounted gear?
Every other project we've done.
Must be tough on the meter reader.
Yeah. Get that bucket truck operator paid, though.
Help me here.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'll try and explain those two photographs that I took. Just scroll up a little bit, Richard, so you can see the first one. All right, right there. It's a little bit difficult to see, but that's the entrance to a, about a 3,000-panel system that's on the eastally side of County Road, about halfway between Farring Hill Road and the Marion Line. The road that goes in is slightly at a curve, and what you're seeing there is a series of those green boxes that line one side of the road. And to the right of that, although it's difficult to see, that pole that you're looking at on the right-hand side of the photograph is not the one which is the drop. The one that's for the drop is just inward of that, and the crossarms and everything are up in the vegetated canopy of those pines, so that that particular structure is pretty well camouflaged by what's there on the site. That vegetation that runs along the back of those transformer pads, I'll call them that, I don't know if that's the correct name. Nevertheless, it's basically at a lot boundary. There's a house that's to the right of that, so it doesn't, it doesn't really reflect property that's owned by the solar system or the solar farm, but they made an agreement that they would at least maintain that buffer. But I think what it does is illustrate a rather basic thing, and that's that there's not an awful lot to be seen there. If you go to the next picture just below that, Richard?
Below it?
Yep. Okay, that, that is more of a head-on view. This is not the same side of a, type of a site that you're looking at under consideration tonight, because the entire array is below grade in this particular site. What you're looking at at the end of that road is a vinyl fence. It's got those slats in it, those black slats in it, so you can't see through. But again, even if you consider all of those components on the right, they sort of blend in. But it's, you're really not getting the whole picture just by looking at these. I took this picture so that you could see what those boxes would look like. But in order to evaluate what really is before you tonight, you need to look at the enlarged plan, I think it's the 30-scale plan that shows the entrance. And there's some things on that plan that I could point out to you that I think would go a long way toward helping you with the decision as to whether or not you should have utility poles that are overhead or whether you could go with something like this. So if we could just look at that plan, I can sort of point that out.
Is this the sheet, Charlie?
No, it's the large, I believe it's the 30-scale plan that shows the entrance.
Is it related to one of the basin blowups, perhaps?
Yeah, keep going. There you go. Yes, that's it. All right, this, this is the plan that shows the entrance to the property of Charge Pond Road. And may I just go up and speak to that? I think it would be easier if I was up there so I could point out some things to you.
Here, let me move out of the way.
This is Charge Pond Road here on the law right. This is the entranceway that goes into the site, and this is a 30-scale plan, so from here to here is about 100 feet, where the road splits off and goes this way and goes this way. This plan also shows that there would be two overhead electric lines, one here and one here. It also shows the drainage area, which they're going to use for runoff coming from the north, and an area here which is a spillway for a swale where it comes down and intercepts a pipe. The pipe comes this way and then ultimately discharges here. The point that I was trying to make in my discussion was that if those panels, I'll call them panels or boxes, whatever you want to call them, are located somewhere in here or here, you would never see them from Charge Pond Road. With these utility poles opened up here, they're going to be high enough to where you're going to need additional clearance away from the trees in order to protect those wires. I don't know how many of you have seen the Eversource trucks and Aspont trucks clearing all of the, the vegetation away from wires? That's what it would have to be in order to protect that pole line. This area from here to here, actually to here, is wide open. If you stand down in Charge Pond Road, your line of vision is from here to here for the entire site. Not only that, the grade here is about elevation 26. The grade up in here is 44 and 45, so that what you're seeing here is the entire display in panoramic vision all the way through. So in addition to my suggestion that you not use poles, but you use those, those pad-mounted units, would be that this area here not be cleared of any vegetation, that the vegetation be kept. That way, the visual side, line of sight going into the site is prohibited by the trees that would still be there. And if you remove this, which I still feel is an important thing to do, the way that they've designed the grading, they forced it to come this way. But one of the things I had to look at with the drainage calculations was, I don't know really what's happening yet, because the latest plan I got, and I made note of this in my last letter, was that the documentation for the drainage areas that are here and here did not match what was shown on the plan that showed the drainage areas. So I needed that to be clarified so I could tell what was going on. But it's my view that the amount of runoff that's coming here is such that you may not need this, that more of a sheet flow in this direction, which is natural flow the way it is today, might not require that. It's still a zoning violation to clear this and put drainage in here. And I believe that even if you needed it, you perhaps could move that out somewhere to where it was in a different location. But the important aspect of this is the wide-open visual scene that you're going to see as you travel up Charge Pond Road. And in my view, there is really no need for it, because it does not really affect the number of solar panels that they want to put up here. Doesn't affect it at all, because there's no panels here. It's just wide open and then a drainage area. So that's why I made the suggestion that they go to that other type of a component, which is much lower, and as a matter of fact, I was just scanning through your own regulations, and it says any of that, any of that sort of structure needs to be screened. So with a Jurniper-type screening in front of those, you probably would never see them. And it wouldn't have.
Partially, yes. So I don't think we disagree with anything Mr. Rowley said, with the exception of the necessity of that basin, but I don't think we can get into that right now. That, the cleared space in that trough of the Y of the road, as we're calling it, it's going to be nearly impossible for us not to clear that or not to really damage that during construction of the roads, the spillway, the infiltration basin, but we're absolutely committed to revegetating it after construction. And we'd pick an appropriate tree that would grow, that would grow a lot higher than a typical screening plant used. Normally, when we do screening, we try to hide things behind it and pick a plant that doesn't grow, because it's so close to the array. But because in this case here, we'll have the detention basin to the north, we'll have the setback to the north, and, you know, more space before we hit the panels, we actually don't need to be incredibly careful about what type of vegetation we let grow there. So, I think we can revegetate that fairly easily.
Charlie, I have to say, all your comments make perfect sense to me.
The issue, yeah, the issue with revegetation, too, is that I would assume that there's a fairly good stand of white pine that's there. And those white pines are not short.
And they're not skinny.
Because they're up in the air, they will present a visual barrier to the panels that are even higher. If you put small trees in the front of that and try to replace that, you'd be putting 50-foot trees in there.
Yeah, when I did the drive, my drive-by there, I felt very confident that it would be well-hidden by the trees that were already there. We're specifically talking about just the entrance, which is where we're creating a gap, right?
You're displaying a field of view which simply widens out like this as you look up in there. And at the same time, you're looking this way, you're looking up. So you're going to see all that display above your eye.
Understood.
So, I'm trying to suggest that maintaining those trees, and with a little bit of careful flagging of trees, just to give an example, I inspected a subdivision in Mashpee where the restriction on that subdivision was that they could not clear a thing within 20 feet of the foundation. They could selectively clear within 10 feet of the foundation. So with a little bit of protection and a little bit of flagging and a little bit of discretion, those trees can be kept. So, you just don't go in there with a big machine and start mowing stuff down indiscriminately without paying attention to what some of the restrictions could be. I think it's possible to maintain those trees, maintain the vegetation underneath, and make this a much better project for not only them, but for the town as well.
I think they have to remove some of these trees on the south side to get some sunlight in there.
I think those trees are probably far enough away from those panels that they wouldn't have any impact.
What do you angle the panels at, 15 degrees?
Don't forget, they're on the other side of that drainage basin.
They're elevated as well. The elevation of the panels is higher than the road.
Correct?
Correct. The grade doesn't go up precipitously about where that drainage basin is, but as you go into that, it does rise beyond it. But the panels begin quite a ways beyond that, so you're going to have an open drainage basin. But between the drainage basin and where the Y is in the road, that could be maintained with vegetation and natural vegetation and not disturbed, and it would help to break up this wide view that you're going to get. You'll still get some because of the roads, but at least it would be less of an impact.
Zach, you're concerned about getting the build equipment in, and how much?
I am, but Charlie's not wrong. Charlie's not wrong. I don't believe those trees would be negatively, would be materially impactful to our project, and I think we could find a way, if it's not revegetation, if it's selective something, something, like find the right words.
Looked at that site recently, but generally, there isn't a lot of understory where you have mature pine trees, so.
It's a pretty thick site, actually. Definitely over by the wetlands, which is where I spent my time, but there's a fairly thick, mostly green briar, huckleberry, blueberry understory. Certainly thicker than the Tahanat sites for reference, but I think it might depend a bit on where you are in the site as well.
I was just thinking, in that triangle, if that's the biggest point of, relatively low vegetation would go a long way.
Yeah, if, I think it's kind of a, this project's designed with pole-mounted equipment. So if you guys were to request, require pad-mounted equipment, that would remove some of the clearance requirements that we have, to Charlie's point about clearing branches so they don't hit. It would actually give us more room to work there, so.
Where would you put the ground-mounted equipment?
We'd try to do it in the same place. It would likely all condense down into the first 150 feet. We'd go from here to about here, and then we'd simply be, I mean, I have to think about how to denote it, but some selective clearing in that area, or minimize clearing, or, I mean, whatever we could do to not destroy the understory. That's the key. Like, there's no, having some standing pine barrens with a bunch of ruts around them isn't going to help anyone. So, if we're going to save that stand of trees to not only help, we've got to make sure it stays, right? It can survive the kind of winds and whatnot it would be now subjected to somewhat on its own. But, it's a good solution. If you, if we go pad-mounted, it gives us the optionality to leave that stand of trees in the, I'll keep calling it the trough of the Y of that road.
I think it's important that we maintain some sort of buffer. You know, it's one thing to have these solar fields all over town, but the residents don't need to be looking at them. And that seems like a pretty small concession, quite honestly, to help folks not have to stare at a huge field of mirrors.
No, I think this is one of those good situations where it's somewhat neutral impact to me and what sounds like pretty great benefit to the town. So that's the situation, I'm happy to let you guys.
Are we all in agreement?
Yep.
Win-win.
So, just for the record, what Charlie has proposed and recommended, I see everybody in this room nodding their head up and down on. All right, good.
Are we waiting to see if the drainage is going to be removed out front from more research?
Yeah, regarding that, I mean, we've looked at it in detail twice. I, as you know, I'm not an engineer, but spoke with a professional engineer on the project and asked him very directly and, you know, urgently to look and make sure that that has to be there. Like, we can't put it somewhere else, we need it, we can't get rid of it, it can't be moved. And the answer I got twice was very clearly, no, we can't move it, and yes, we need to have it.
How do you get to it, then, if you're not going to disturb that Y of tree stand?
This basin, in the 50-foot.
Yeah, but isn't, didn't Charlie say that there was a pipe that runs from the main basin to it? So how do you get there, if you're not going to disturb the trees?
So I guess maybe the trough vegetation warrants some additional discussion. I was assuming that obviously, for our pole-mounted, as Zach noted, the clearing can come in, but certain aspects of the design may need to stay in terms of selective clearing in that location for the stormwater.
Charlie also said that we could try to do existing grade. If we reswale on the top right, then we can have existing drainage as opposed to trenching, and then we can do away with less clearing. And maybe even move over the drainage field or do away with it, potentially.
One of the things I looked, yeah, one of the things, excuse me, one of the things I looked at was that long oval drainage area. And I looked at the 100-year storm calculation. And if I was looking at it correctly, and again, the designations were not the same in the documentation and what was on the plan, but if I was looking at it correctly, that area's not even overtop for the 100-year storm. So there really is no need to have a stone-lined spillway and a swale leading to a pipe that ultimately gets down to that lower drainage area. If it's a 500-year storm, who cares what floods?
Is that just treatment?
Well, we can take a look at that, I just don't want to commit to that necessarily tonight, because I know that part of what we're doing is also trying to maintain the hydro period of the wetlands, and so I'm not sure if that has something to do with why we're directing flow from that basin.
Thinking it's treatment before it goes.
We're in a, we're in a very sandy soil there. Not like some of the other sites, it's very sandy. Subsoil allows infiltration at a very rapid rate. So, if you don't need an outfall like that, it's customary to have an outfall. I mean, it's designed that way, the way that the stormwater management people do for stormwater, for other types of facilities. This is slightly different. You're not going to have all of the runoff coming down to that site, because as it drips off of those panels, it's going to go directly onto the ground underneath, and a certain amount of that gets absorbed right away. So, I would like to be able to take a look at at least that corner. I won't quibble with what they've got for the rest of the site. It's out of sight, you don't see it, but this is right at Charge Pond Road. And the zoning is very clear, you don't put drainage facilities in that buffer. So, maybe they can't do it the way that they designed it, but maybe they can take a second look and see if there's some other option.
Could it be located to the right of the intersection, a little, maybe a little further north?
So long as it's outside the 50-foot buffer.
That area?
Take a third look at it and see if with these other changes, something else gives that would allow us to get it out of the 50-foot.
It's an overflow for the primary, right?
No, it's, well, I can't speak to the details of it.
Partly, there's a swale that comes down the road that's on the right-hand side of that. There's a channel light that's on the eastally side of that road, and it comes down and is picked up by a pipe that has, goes underneath the road, and then it's all tied together and ultimately finds its way down to that area that's right next to Charge Pond Road. There's got to be a way to intercept that, perhaps a little further up, so you're not getting all of the flow at one place. But I'm sure with the type of soil we've got and the management that you could figure out, we don't need that drainage area in the buffer. There's got to be another way of coming around that.
I think that pipe is raccoons, Charlie.
I beg your pardon?
I think it's going to live in that pipe as raccoons.
Okay, so.
I would be happy to talk with the engineer that's done the design, if that's helpful. I just believe that there's got to be another way to come about this and make the project a little bit more beneficial for the town to wear here.
I think that makes sense, we can connect with Charlie. Charlie, I also, I'm glad you mentioned it, I did want to say, so I think in our stormwater report, because of the number of nodes that we were running, that missing information that you had noted, if you, I don't know if you had your stormwater reporting flagged before you.
I saw that, but it didn't match with the plan. There's a subcatchment area plan in here that showed the various capturing areas, and the numbers weren't the same.
Okay, so maybe, maybe our engineer needs to speak with you, too, because when he read your comment, we didn't understand the, so I'll add it to the list.
Okay.
Yeah, because there were two, you saw that there were two separate sections, right?
There were two particular drainage areas that impacted that lower section.
Oh, I meant two separate sections of the report.
Yeah, two sub-drainage areas that brought water into that area. And they didn't match up with the plan that shows the subcatchments.
Okay, and I just wanted to make sure you saw that there were two post-development conditions hydrology sections, right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll follow up. So, I think on the visual, we've reached agreement, on the basin, we'll connect to discuss further. And I think those were the only two items we were discussing. Did I miss anything?
Is there any other, I was just looking for the landscape plan, are there any other screening proposed along Charge Pond?
There isn't, because the tree line is fairly wide along the road.
We're only clearing for our apron and access road. And ultimately.
Falls away down there, and how about the residences to the south?
So, we maintain the 50-foot along these undeveloped properties, and then there's also the commercial property to the south as well. I mean, these two are residential, yeah, and the gas company property.
Just leaving the natural vegetation there?
That's the LNG facility, the cleared area there. The big gas tanks.
Do you actually have a landscape plan that, in the package?
No.
We had not. We'll add landscape information based on this Y trough vegetative screening discussion.
Can you show me the location of the battery storage?
Is that the two equipment pads? They're at each of the equipment pads here. So they're central to the site.
And what size air conditioning units are being put in each one?
I don't know off the top of my head. They're a commercial unit meant to cool a shipping container-sized battery, battery container.
Be great if we had noise information on it as well.
We do, it's 82 decibels at one meter.
At the property boundary would be even better.
I imagine. We can run that for you guys, no problem.
Thank you.
So, with that, you're going to come back along with the other two sites, or?
So I think our plan, I think not even I'm going to ask for a condition approval after that. Our plan is to address the landscaping plan in the Y area of the road, convert the utility poles to utility pads, utility pad-mounted equipment, provide information on the sound, and then we'll have our stormwater engineer liaise directly with Mr. Rowley to try to, A, come up with a, answer that question about the matching control points, and B, come up with a better, I don't want to insult anyone, better solution to the drainage basin at the entrance for this site. And we'll work to submit that first. And then in parallel to that, we've finished all of the conservation flagging with, for the two Tahanat sites. We have enough information, after two or three, or now four, back-and-forths with both Charlie and the board on this project, where I think we can, we can kind of assimilate some of those comments into the revisions for the Tahanat projects, and hopefully make, provide you guys with some clear and clean revisions for the upcoming meeting on 19th or 12th?
19.
19. So, yeah, we'll shoot to have three revisions for you all at that meeting, but obviously the focus, our focus will be on Charge Pond and closing this project out at that meeting.
George, if it would help move this along, maybe as soon as they've had a chance to develop a plan of just that entrance area, if they wanted to send a copy to me, we could at least talk about it. And so that if there are any issues that we can work out in the meantime, we could do that. And then they would have a plan that I would feel more comfortable with in presenting to you. Might save a little time on everybody's end if we did that.
Well, I would hope that they'd be in contact with you through this whole revision.
I just want to be sure that I have your authority to do that, that's all.
Yeah, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Charlie.
You feel that you have it now?
Do now.
Okay.
And then the other item I noted on the agenda was that the decision deadlines, I think for these, are coming up on October 11th. I know last time when we met, the dates listed were erroneous, but now I think those are possibly the real deadlines, so we just wanted to discuss, obviously, an extension to those for the board, since we won't be submitting revised materials to before then.
We're going to need an extension till the 19th, anyway.
Yeah, that's what she's bringing up.
For the 20th, so they can file the decision on the town.
The 20th, yeah.
Okay.
So you're going to give George a letter tonight requesting an extension, right?
Sure, is it, I'm not sure what the process is, so you need me to submit a letter to you?
An email would be fine.
Okay, just indicating an extension to the 20th.
Email to Kent. Continuation of the requirements for a decision until October 20th.
Okay.
Show the whole.
Yes, Kathy. Mr. Chairman, Kathy Papaharto wants to raise a question. Or is it Nancy? Sorry, Nancy.
That's okay, thank you. I just wanted to thank the board for going, and Charlie for going out and talking about the landscaping and the screening. the landscaping and the, the screening and the sound, because one of the things that has been so troublesome by having the solar project in town is that they are highly visible from an electric area such as Toby Road, so anything that Borrego can do in construction to make this less visible in Charge Pond Road would be very beneficial.
Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Nancy.
Could you hear that?
She said she, she appreciates the, anything that can reduce the visual impact because of projects like Toby Road and the, the noise levels as well, that they'd be mitigated as, as much as possible.
And then Ken said Zach and Stacy had nothing to do with Toby Road.
The whole site goes downhill north to south.
Let me look at the grader, Ken, so I don't have to speak.
Yeah, I don't have them in front of me, that's why I asked.
It's, yeah, I mean.
Does it flatten out when you go west? Is that why we don't see detention basins over there?
Oh, no, there are detention basins to the west as well. This is overall, so there's sort of a high point here, and then it goes back down this direction, so there's as well a basin here, basin here.
Oh, okay, it's, there's a small one down to the south, okay.
It's kind of an oddly shaped kind of knoll, basically all different areas falling into the wetlands and to the, to the pond, to the northeast, or northwest.
There's depressions scattered throughout, and then down to the north as well.
Just curious why you needed one over here, and I couldn't see it, see the other ones.
Right, we were so focused on this end, but there, there are several throughout the site.
George, they did make a, a small adjustment in the southwest corner. My, my suggestion in my first letter was that they pull the facility back to about elevation, I think it was 34. From what you see, it would be probably three-quarters of an inch to the right of the limit of the solar panels, but they did reduce that by about an acre and a third, as I recall the correspondence, the latest correspondence I got from them, and removed some panels in that area. They did adjust the drainage area somewhat, so it pulled it back from Tahanat Pond a little bit. Not Tahanat Pond, Parker Mills.
Parker Mill.
A little bit. And it does rise substantially from Parker Mills and the river in an easterly direction, and about where the narrow part of it is, is about where the highest point is. It's about elevation 45, where that narrow neck is, and then it gets high again where you see it from Charge Pond Road. From that point on, it begins to taper off again to the north and west. So when you're looking at Charge, looking at it from Charge Pond Road, you're looking at a grade that goes up and then dips back somewhat, so, but you'll still see a fairly good expanse unless we do some adjusting there.
And the buffer from the pond, just for the board's information, previously, if you look at it kind of as an average along the whole length, which is helpful for a sense of things, but not necessarily the, the best way to look at it, but anyway, originally the average buffer from the pond was 65 feet, that's been increased to 80 feet, and if you look at the maximum setback from the pond, it was originally 73 feet at the farthest point from the pond, and now it's 128 feet at the farthest point from the pond, so we did pull it back, as Charlie noted, kind of throughout, but maybe in this area.
Take the dam out, is that still a pond?
I think the only place that you'd see anything would be if you drove in St. Patrick Cemetery and looked at it from that point of view. Once you get beyond that, the houses that are there have quite a vegetated area behind them between there and the Parker Mills, so it's almost impossible to see across the river at that point. But from the cemetery, if you looked in a northeast direction, you might see a corner of it. That's why I suggested pulling it back to that higher elevation, so it would maintain the vegetation.
Well, they're also going to let more light in, which will change the vegetation.
True, yeah.
Uh, motion to continue to the 19th?
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Yep.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Charlie.
You're welcome. We already did item six, correct? So, any other topics that I did not anticipate?
Right, thank you very much. Great, thank you very much.
Is this discussion point?
Mm-hmm.
We've talked about this once before, and you sent out an email about the solar bylaws and the setbacks that we currently have, and I don't, I'm not sure, how do we bring it to light to possibly increase the setbacks?
Uh, did you get any, I did watch that webinar that Serpide put out the other night, but I wasn't.
Young lady.
I wasn't present for the meeting, it was, webinar was a bit dry, but.
The webinar was, it was informative, but it was tough to get through, yes. She didn't really touch on setbacks, though.
No, she didn't touch on the solar bylaws as much as I thought.
Russell, I think the thing that I would propose is that, once we get past town meeting and the current articles for this town meeting, that, that this board probably conduct a workshop-type session and just put all the issues out on the table and, and with the goal of coming up with a potential amendment or change to our solar bylaws that we would sponsor at, at a spring town meeting?
Yeah, that would, that would be, I think it would be prudent, because 50 feet is nothing. It's nothing, you know, it's really disappointing, actually, if someone develops next to that.
Don't be surprised, some 50 feet makes them cry like a baby. You'd think you were cutting off a limb.
Oh, I know, but it's like.
But no, we do have to gather some information and see how other people are doing it, if there's something we're missing. Like, there was one picture that you showed, was that, I think you said it was off a county road?
Yeah.
But that was a case where it went in and it dropped into an old sand pit, so, you know, the.
Good thing.
The, butters actually let, let them come closer, because they'd rather have that than a subdivision back there. Same thing with the one off of Squirrel Island Road, the first one that was built, you'd never know it was back there, you went up a road and it dropped into a hole.
Yeah.
So, I mean, increasing the buffer, you know, you could, if you could be a little flexible about it.
Yeah, I mean, the same thing, by special permit or by site condition, you can change.
Previously disturbed sites like, like those two.
But to have it at 50, I think is a disadvantage right away, if we're going to keep having solar farms put in, you know?
There is discretion in the existing bylaw on, on buffer when you.
No, I was reading that, but it doesn't seem like we're able to really use it that well.
Well, it depends on what you want to use it for. I mean, are you just trying to restrict against, you're trying to create habitat, are you trying to buffer residential development?
I would say both. I was, you know, I'm, there's a lot of clear cutting there, so habitat.
You'll have competing interests, and you have to decide which ones make the most, have the most importance to.
Yeah, that's right, you know.
And when you put restrictions on that, you cannot unduly.
Yeah.
Impede their development, so if you say, you know, a mile, they might say that.
Right. No, I was thinking about 150, honestly, would be reasonable to go to, considering, I mean, because that wouldn't impede their project at all with the amount of acreage they're using, but at the same time, it would give a good chance that future development or whoever's there is not going to see those through, you know, even with a windstorm or something, you know?
Well, it was mentioned made that our solar bylaw was easier to comply with than most, so.
Yeah.
We need to look at what other people are doing and.
Yeah.
And see where we can tighten it up.
If you want to see what a 50-foot buffer looks like, even with the vegetation on the trees, go up to the top of the hill next to Great Hill Mobile Home Park, that's supposed to be a 50-foot buffer between the solar panels and the park, but it's like it doesn't even exist.
Charlie, where's this at?
Cranberry Highway, up on the hill between where the water tank is and Great Hill Mobile Home Park.
Great Hill?
Oh, yeah, up on top of the hill.
Right.
In West Wareham.
You go in there, there's.
Is this West Wareham?
Turn in the driveway where there's commercial buildings on both sides of the driveway that goes up the hill.
I'll find it.
Heading toward the water tower.
Yeah.
And where the water tower is in West Wareham.
Even 200 for that type of a commercial clear cutting, I don't think would be a impede, you know, impede their project, they're like, like 83 acres getting cut there.
They're just looking to get.
Yeah.
You know, every ounce of production out of the piece of property they can, but that doesn't mean that it should come at the cost of the residents of the town.
I mean, that particular site is troublesome because of the soil, that everything runs off that hill and ends up in the trailer park, Mobile Home Park, excuse me.
It's all glacial tilt.
It's just easy for them, their argument to be, and we're complying with the 50-foot buffer here, it's like, well, let's just stop right there, that's a joke of a buffer, you know, that, it just seems that way.
But you've got to be careful, though, the rules are the rules until we change the rules.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but I think we can't get an amendment unless we would agree to try to.
Sure, sure.
That's why I'm just having the discussion to.
Well, the good news is, is they agreed to bump it up to triple it for us, right?
Yeah, well, in some spots, not at all.
Well, here, they've got pretty much plenty of room.
Yeah.
When you try to sneak one in between two subdivisions, you know, you don't have that, and maybe it doesn't belong there.
Right.
It was like that, that proposed project on Squirrel Island.
So I'll, I'll commit that I'll, that between you and me, Russell, as soon as we get past town meeting, we'll, we'll beat these guys up and make them do something, alright?
Yeah, I think we can talk it through.
Sure.
Certainly, I don't think anyone would be opposed to some.
I think, I think you're going to have, you're going to have everybody on this board nodding up and down that we need to make it tougher, there's no question.
Three that I know are in the blogs, or down the hall, you can't even see them.
There's a perfect example, the one on Squirrel Island Road, the neighbors didn't want it.
It doesn't mean what you're chatting, look at it every day.
They would rather have solar panels in the backyard than, than houses, so.
Yeah.
And I will say, that one that's behind those houses was probably done in the best way that I've seen any project done. They went in and basically graded the property, and then the very next thing they did was loam and seed the slopes around the perimeter. So they had grass growing there early on, there were some places that eroded during the course of construction and everything, but they basically had the perimeter set by the time they were actually installing panels. So when they got done, it was in pretty good shape, whereas other ones I've seen, it's been like pulling hen's teeth to get even the smallest amount of cooperation, but.
Most of those, all the big ones up there were all, I'm surprised they didn't say they wanted to mine the hill down to flatten everything down, you know, 30, 40 feet.
With the num, with the number of rocks that were on that hill, Mike, I don't think they wanted to see another rock. As a matter of fact, they, they wanted to change the location of a gate for the fence, which I didn't have any problem with, because they were having problems getting the posts in the ground, the rocks were that bad.
Really?
That whole, whole hill up there is nothing but boulders.
Wow.
If, if, if I'd thought about it at the time, when you look at that site now, if they had a screen of Arboviti in, in front of the fence at the end of that road.
Yeah.
You'd never see it. But the picture I showed you is, is I took it from probably, oh, 200, 300 feet in on that road from Cranberry Highway, and I was still looking up at it, and that's, that's what, I knew it was that way, and so it's one of the reasons I wanted to present that information to you, so he could see what the impact would be, and I, I think by putting this added screen in there, it'll lessen that a lot.
Probably wouldn't grow at all.
George, that's it.
We have more on the agenda?
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:25.